Okay, good evening and welcome to the Eastlime Board of Selectment meeting for, the regular meeting for October 18th, 2023. All those who can, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no additional agenda and consent calendar items. I was asked, again, volume is a problem, we know that, we keep trying to address it on the public access channel. It is, the audio is okay on YouTube, but I do get told that we need to get closer to our mics when we speak as well from Mike Mines and the other people, so it will help people hear. At this point, just remember, the public do want to rest the board. Any member? Okay, not seeing any, we'll move on to the approval of minutes.
Okay, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 4, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roseanne, any comments or corrections?
Uh, I think I, if I, yes, I have, I have one, which is at the very end of the minutes of, of October 4th, there, we just need to, I have the sheet, we need to acknowledge that we moved into executive session at a particular time and when we exited, I can give this to the recording secretary, and then we moved to adjourn. It kind, the way the minutes are written, it sounds like we just kind of adjourned. And we know votes were taken, so we need that, that language in there, so I can provide this to her.
Okay, we'll make sure that's done and it's attached to these minutes-
Yes, correct.
-as well as to the votes from the previous ones.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments or corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions?
I will abstain.
One abstention.
Alright.
Moving on to the special meeting of October 5th.
Right, move to approve the special meeting minutes of October 5th, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cunningham, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Up, I tried to, Bill, I'm sorry, too. We are ready now for the consent calendar.
Yes, move to approve the consent calendar for our, for the October 18, 2023, I think we, shall we, October, yes, 18, Board of Selectment meeting in the amount of $14,434.20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roseanne, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes 600. Moving on, discussion, purchase of, the town overwhelmingly approved the purchase, ought to continue, ought to enter into the agreement and purchase just the properties known as Hathaway Farms, Osugachi Hills, and Brainerd Road, so I've reached out to Attorney Block today, they'll be taking the next steps as far as that goes. And I know a question came up about the title search, the title search is just about complete, there's been no problems, and it has not been done, it's been done by a firm, not, not a, an attorney or anybody in-house, it has been done by someone with the title insurance and everything else like that, to make sure the town is protected. And also, we are talking and working now with the state, now that it's passed, it makes it much easier now to get that $400,000 transferred over to us, so we'll keep everyone advised moving ahead, but right now, thank you for the support of the town, and thank this board for all the help and counsel over the last year and a half getting us to that point. Thank you very much. Any questions about that at all, before we move on?
Just, just a comment, I think it was very good that so many people came out to vote at the referendum, just a, just a, a good showing, so that's a, that's very healthy for, for politics in the town and, and people participating, so.
Right, we had about a little over 12%, we actually had a larger percentage turn out for this vote than we did for the yearly budget referendum, so that was impressive that people took, and it was steady all day over there, so. Interesting, the road that, the, the part of my street that had my address on it was missing from the book when I went to get my ballot, they had to go find it, but they realized that they could probably give me a ballot without too much concern, but it was located.
So, did they recognize you?
Yeah, they recognized me, and I had to have my ID, so, yeah.
Yeah, I would like, just like to add that I think that we, we, we deserve a slap on the back, a pat on the back, for not only our own work, but also the many opportunities that the public had to weigh in on this, and especially to the fine legal team that we had of many attorneys advising on us on how to get this done. I, I think this is one, my years of service, this is one of my proudest accomplishments-
Thank you.
-that we were able to do with the team.
Thank you. Uh, just a sad bit of news is the president of the Eastlime Land Trust, Ron Lewich, passed this morning, so he'd been ill for quite some time, so our condolences to his friends and his families and, on his passing. Okay, moving on, there's a, I have MOU here, it's really not that at all, it's a agreement between the town and the Board of Education, is, you know, we initially hoped that 165 Boston Post Road, the old emergency management and dispatch facility would be possibly used as a, a museum, but they decided they weren't interested, the library and the historical society, so they had no desire for it. So, the Board of Ed reached out with an interest to use it because right now, and I'm sure Chris will articulate this when he gets up, right now, their equipment is in the senior parking lot, and if you've been to a baseball game there now, they're, all their outdoor equipment is there, children are playing on it and so forth, this will give them a place to store it safely, they will also maintain the building, and they'll be, you know, we'll pay for the electricity, which we have to do anyway, because we have that communication equipment in there, we also have the generator there and some towers and that, so we'll maintain that, but they'll have control over that too, so. Chris, do you want to get up and speak to how we got to here? And just give us your name and position, please.
Chris Lund, Facilities Director for the schools, how did we get here? So, we had expressed an interest sometime in the past, which unfortunately, the historic group got in front of us in line, and when that fell through, just happened to be the same week I was wondering, you know, I asked, hey, what's going on, and they're like, hey, good timing. So, we inquired again about whether the building was going to be taken over by that organization, that had fallen through for whatever reasons, and we had expressed an interest in taking over, and Kevin already told a lot of what we plan to do with the building, you know, moving equipment to the rear of the building, we've already cleared out the rest of the items that were left behind in the building proper, the second floor in the future will either use as office spaces for the rest of facilities, or it's possibly storage, or sometime in the future, if we have additional staff or need swinging space for a construction project, we'll have that available. And then on the first floor, the communication equipment is in the front of the building in spaces that we can't access, and then there's a short wave system there for other emergencies that the town's going to maintain, continue to maintain, and we're just going to build a small wall to separate that, and then what remains on the first floor, we're going to use as indoor maintenance, storage, and a little workspace for the fellows, like, if they need to fabricate, do some maintenance in the shop, so, but nothing heavy equipment or whatnot, so. I think it's a good opportunity for us because we get that additional space, it's a good opportunity for the town because you don't have a vacant building that you're constantly concerned about the condition of, you know, we'll be in there pretty much every day, if the boiler just stops running and it's cold in the winter, you don't have to worry about pipes breaking, and don't have to worry about it being, coming in unattractive or attractive nuisance because nobody's there, so it attracts people you don't necessarily want there, so I think it winds up being a good opportunity for both the town to have a caretaker owner of the building and for us to have that space.
Thank you, and explain, it might be to tell them where, you know, Kyle and Mr. Lavanti, where they're working out of right now, they work basically out of the, the-
Right, so the, if you've been ever to the baseball field, the building right next to it where they have the press box, call it in the upper level, the grounds offices, what used to be, I'm told, the concession stand years ago, and then there's a small garage where they keep their painting and materials and the paint sprayer and whatnot for the baseball field, so most of that equipment there will go to the new facility parking lot, a few things have already wound up there like plows and whatnot, so we've sort of been moving in a little early. And again, that'll take away some of that traffic, particularly, you know, at the end of the day, when students are using that as one of the pickup sites that they use, so I think, again, all in all, it's a good opportunity for both parties.
Okay, any, any questions for Chris or the superintendent's here as well? Any questions?
Not for them, I do have questions about this transaction that maybe you can answer.
The, the agreement, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, enough of that, thank you, Chris, thank you, Justin.
Sure, thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, sure, I'm sorry, Ann.
Oh, go ahead.
Is the structure of the building have to be shored up? Is there anything having to, you know, do they have to reinforce the building at all?
No.
No.
No, it's actually, it was the original Flanders Firehouse, so it's stronger than it needs to be for our purposes, but there's no structural requirements or needs for us.
That's a good question, thank you, Ann. Okay, Bill?
So, do we have any plans to remove the equipment, the communications equipment that's in there now?
Not in the near future.
Is it, is it because it's pricey, expensive to-
No, it's right now, we need a second site to have our equipment in the event of some type of a failure out at the, as a backup for what's out in, at our police station and so forth, and there is a backup to the backup as well, so it's not as if we-
Yeah, I, I know previously, some of us talked about when that building became vacant, seeing what the retail, if there was any value in that building, to turn it into some type of business, and to sell it and to use that money. The reason why I ask that is because, I mean, I, I've seen all the things laying around in the parking lot that's, that's there now, and I understand that they need somewhere to go, and there needs to be someplace to do, like, maintenance, but if that building has got a fair market value of, you know, whatever it is, $300,000 or something, they can buy a really good shed, you know, a, a more adequate or more appropriate building to put, you know, somewhere else on the properties. So, my question was, did we do that appraisal to figure out what the building was like? Because it just feels like once this agreement is, is made, it's, it's open-ended, the way it's worded, but it feels like it's going to be very difficult to get out of once we get into it. So, that's just the depth of, of the, those kind of things, that we looked through that, is this really the most cost-effective way to do it?
Well, the thing is, they don't really have any place right now, because what we've been working on for years is to get all those extra structures off of the school property to keep it a little more open, and this is right adjacent to it, and, you know, the, the largest area that they have to maintain is right there at Flanders and the high school, so I think this is a perfect location for that type of a, a structure, and, you know, I would hazard a guess, anything in today's world to construct would not be cheap, you know, everything is very expensive, especially if you're going to have a need for at least foreseeable future, having these communications equipment there.
The, the communications equipment is one of the things I was thinking about, and I was also thinking about what would be an appropriate business to put there in that area, and offhand, I can't think of an appropriate business, I mean, it's not like, you know-
You know, and you look down at so many businesses that are remote and so forth like that too, and, and, you know, obviously, you couldn't with, as long as we have communication equipment or anything going in there, we have to be, have some relation with the town.
Yeah, I would think it would all be contingent on having somewhere else to put the communications equipment, that's why my first question was, is there somewhere else to put the communications equipment?
Not, not as of right now.
And I, I think, and Kevin, you may know detail on this, but I think that, that unless we build a new communications tower, that we're pretty, we're still relying on that tower and its connections to the public safety facility.
Special cables that go through there, something also that-
Right, yeah.
As I say, I know it's not an easy fix, I'm just asking if you kind of thought through that and just said, you know-
To be honest with you, with all the moving parts you just mentioned, I think the cost would probably outweigh what we, you know, because here again, anybody that would buy that building would also point out the fact that it's not handicap accessible, there's a whole lot that would reduce, I think, the commercial value of it as well.
Yeah, that's, that's on them to upgrade the building, I wouldn't want to upgrade it, but like I say, I don't, I can't, as I was thinking through this whole cost-effectivity thing, I don't know what other kind of business in that area would, you know, because we're not going to want a lot of traffic and da-da-da-da-da, but Boston Post Road is building and developing, and it is becoming more popular now, so I was just mentally going through this exercise of, of cost-effectivity, and if we did sell that building for, if it was 300, I'm just making up a number.
When I, when I looked at the, that the study the library had done concerning the moving their archives over there and historical society sharing that space, one of the comments, the person writing, when they assessed that building for those purposes, was that it wouldn't have that flow that the library has, you know, where people come and they would want to see, you know, historical artifacts, archives, et cetera, so, so it's loca, it's not the best location for that, and, and there were some other, you know, issues, but nothing structural, it wasn't like, it was structurally sound, it was just a matter of other, another location being better for them, yeah.
So, I'm not opposed to the agreement, I just wanted to know that we went through the whole thought process of, you know, is it really the most cost-effective thing to do?
I would think at this point, it is, it provides a much-needed facility for the Board of Ed.
The other, in fact, the other thing I would add is, you know, if you look at its proximity, you know, Flanders Elementary School, that building, and then the Miracle Field where there's been a sizable investment in that field, do we want to lose control of a building that is so integral to both of those features of the town? So, it would seem to me it's in our interest to maintain ownership and control of it.
Any other comments?
Yes, I believe that when this was discussed previously, perhaps not by this board, but the previous board, we were also told that we could not dismantle the wiring because it was a regional hub.
It, you could, but here again, that would be, at this point in time, like trying to move the, the substation for Eversource where it is at the end of exit 74, it'd be a very costly venture.
Yes, so I think that that's another thing in favor of this plan, will there be additional costs involved in this?
Not, as it says in here, basically, if they want to do some renovation work, that's incumbent upon them, but here again, if, if the roof needs to be reshingled or something like that, I think that, you know, that might be something that would be a little different. It does say in there, we will take care of the electricity because we have to pay for that anyway right now, but that the heating and so forth will be under the Board of Ed. It, it, it's really comprehensive, the way they talk about, you know, we'll maintain the tower and the generator, but as far as the maintenance of the grounds and so forth, that'll fall into the school. As it is right now, we've been, during the summer, we were trying once a month to get Parks and Rec to get over there just to, you know, knock down the weeds and that a little bit, now that'll be taken care of, so.
In my mind's eye, those expenses are us, I mean, Board of Ed and the town, we're, we're all the same.
Yeah, we have, and so-
Somebody has to pay to do that kind of stuff, and which pocket it comes out of, it's which pocket it comes out of.
I like it coming out of theirs better, so.
What comes out of ours to go into theirs, so.
I know.
I just have one comment about the agreement itself, and this is just a sort of a organizational, structural comment about the agreement, in, in, there's a number of whereas clauses at the beginning, and one of them concerns the particular use of the property by Board of Education for the workshops, storage of maintenance equipment, and offices, I, I mean, it, it just seems to me that that should have been in the body and not so much, you know, with some detail in the body of the agreement, not so much in a whereas clause, just, just so that, that it's clear that that's what you're agreeing to, that the uses, clarifying the uses and having them actually as part of the terms, and not so much in the preamble of the agreement, just a structural thing. If I see a contract, I want to edit it, so, that's it.
Okay, so you're not, you're not wanting to change it, though?
Um, no, I mean, I would, I would prefer it, but that's, that's up to Town Council what they do with that, and you guys-
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But I, just a thought.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, is Superintendent Newtonis here this evening? I wonder if he might like to add comment?
Happy to, Roseanne, I, I think it's, it's a win-win, you know, for us, you know, especially going to baseball games and seeing the blight, the, you know, the plows, the things that are right in front, moving those away, the trucks, moving those away from that area is beneficial to us all, and I think it's, it's a good move, it's going to be a great space for us to do interior work, you know, construction-type jobs when it's cold in the wintertime in a smaller space, and then be able to farm out from there.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, yes, so this one is the, I think it's this one, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll set there, "Resolvent authorize the first selectman to sign on behalf of the town the facility use agreement, authorizing the Eastlime Board of Education to use a portion of the 171 Boston Post Road property for a workshop, storage of maintenance equipment, and offices."
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan, for the comment?
So, once we vote on this, this is set to go?
Yes, well, once I sign it.
Yes.
Which will be tomorrow.
So then, they can begin next week if they want to, moving things in there?
Sounds like they probably-
Well, is that-
I think they did last week.
If you wanted to move it out and then move it back in, yes.
Sounds like they cleaned out very well, thank you.
Ann, you had your hand up?
Yeah, well, what's the address, something that's in 165, something that's on 171.
I think the, I think the Board of Ed's address is the 165, and then the actual facility is 171 Boston Post Road. Because it fronts, it fronts the Boston Post Road.
Right, right, exactly, good point. Okay.
Want somebody to make?
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously, so now your stuff, your stuff, as soon as I sign it tomorrow, more is legally where it's supposed to be, so. All right, thank you. Moving on, we've had a bequeath, a bequest from the estate of Ruth Tambary to the Eastlime Senior Center as well as the Eastlime Library. It has been, I mean, to give money, you'd think it would be easy and bequested, but it was a lot harder. I'll let you walk us through it, Tracy.
Good evening, Tracy Collins, I'm the town attorney. So, Ruth Tambary passed away last year and left a bequest in her will to the Eastlime Library Foundation and the Eastlime Senior Center. That is what we call a probate act, those were probate assets, and those will come directly to the town. I believe that Mr. Gervais already received all the documentation and the check should be coming anytime now. Then there was a separate IRA account, which is an individual retirement account, which is not considered a probate asset, and that, the beneficiaries on that account are 50% to the town of Eastlime Senior Center and 50% to the Eastlime Library Foundation, and it's been more of a struggle to get those funds, because what has to happen is, because that account has all the investments in it and goes up and down with the stock market, it has to be liquidated on the same day. So, I've been helping Eastlime Library Foundation because it's just a ton of documents that they need, and corporate resolutions, and proving that they're a 501(c)(3), and it's been difficult for the foundation to navigate, and it benefits the town if, if I help them because then the town gets its money, the senior center, sooner. So, we've been walking through that process, the Eastlime Library Foundation seems they're ready to go with their documents, but what also has to happen, on the day that the account is liquidated, it also has to open new accounts, one in the name of the Town of Eastlime and another one in the name of the Eastlime Library Foundation, and that's typically the way IRAs are liquidated with these financial services company, they insist they liquidate, open a new account, and then the town can take its money from its own account. And they, this financial services company from Texas is having a difficult time understanding municipalities and, and what a municipality is in Connecticut and what a first selectman is, so I've been plodding along with them, it looks like we're almost there. The resolution that, and I should tell you, the, the IRA has about $180,000 in it, and so 90 would go to the town senior center, and I already spoke to Mr. Gervais, and he has a separate account for the Eastlime Senior Center, and it's my understanding that that's where the funds would be deposited, and then the other half would go directly to the Eastlime Library Foundation. So, the resolution that you have before you is our attempt to get this financial services company to give us the money, I, I think we're not at the end of the road on this, and the next duly-elected first selectman will probably be speaking to us more about this, but this is what they've approved as of today, but it still has to go through compliance.
Yeah.
So, what I'm asking you to do is authorize Kevin Siri up until the day he, the new selectman takes office, be able to sign any documents that they need, and then after that date, whoever the new first selectman is, would be authorized to sign whatever documents they need. But just so that you know, it involves closing out the account, opening a new IRA, and then liquidating that new IRA.
You know, after dealing with bond counsel over this last issue, this makes a whole lot more sense to me than I think it would have been a month ago.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Now, the library also has a separate account, the Nicholas Pearhouse account?
No, that, that's, that's where this is going to go.
It's going in there, okay, clarified, thank you.
Yes, I've been in close contact with Lisa Timothy all throughout this process.
And this may be, I don't want to get too technical, but in doing it in that way, liquidating and then opening up the account the same day, does that, how does that affect the basis in the account, if you know?
Because it's a charitable IRA, there is, it doesn't affect the basis at all, whatever, what will happen is, if 80,000 of the town's money goes into it and then we liquidate right away, there would not be any cost basis determined because it's a charitable IRA.
It's a charitable IRA, so that-
It's a charitable inherited IRA.
So, that avoids that, that issue with that.
Yes, yes, it's not taxable at all when your IRA is, benefits a charity or governmental entity such as the Town of Eastlime.
Thank you.
Well said, okay. Resolution of the Town of Eastlime Board of Selectmen, whereas the Town of Eastlime Senior Center, a department within the town, is a named beneficiary of 50% of an individual retirement account, IRA, set up by Ruth Tambary, now deceased, whereas the Eastlime Library Foundation, a separate nonprofit corporation, is the beneficiary of the remaining 50% of said IRA, whereas the IRA account is managed by Avantex Investment Services Incorporated and Avantex Advisory Services Incorporated, whereas in order for the Town of Eastlime to receive its 50% share of the funds, the current IRA must be liquidated and a new IRA account opened in the name of the Town of Eastlime. Resolve the duly-acting first selectman, whether it is Kevin Siri, whether it be Kevin Siri or the newly-elected first selectman as of 12/4/23 of the Town of Eastlime, is authorized on behalf of the town to sign all documentation to close the current IRA account and open a new account with its 50% of the proceeds on the day of liquidation in the name of the Town of Eastlime. Further resolve that the duly-authorized first selectman is authorized to close the newly-formed IRA account and liquidate the proceeds made payable to the Town of Eastlime, dated this 18th day of October, 2023, Eastlime Board of Selectmen members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and to show you how this has constantly been moving, well, Tracy sent us this morning at, right at the beginning of the meeting, she had to come over and change it with Ann, so Ann would have the updated verbiage, so this is-
I just got that email when I pulled into the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, once that gets done, just as Ann read, we don't have anything to sign tonight because that'll have to be added to it, so. What I'll do is, I'll just, we can just put the signatures on the line as if we did, and that should be fine, and then, you know, go from there.
And I will probably be back.
I'm sure.
The way things are going.
Okay.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the move is, it's been seconded? Okay, well, seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Bill seconded, okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. That completes our new business for the evening, moving on to ex officios, Bill, anything for you?
No meetings since last meeting.
Ann?
Same, same for me, nothing.
Dan?
Well, I did meet with Parks and Rec, and I'll just, I'll report that they're actively working on getting ready for the budget season and discussing what their priorities ought to be. Big, I greet big Doc, washed into Will Cook's speech, and they're trying to deal with that.
Well, I'll, I'll cover that a little more.
Oh, you'll cover that, or else, stay away from that one then? And, let's see, um, what else, there was something, um, there was a discussion, you know, we used to have the tent down at the, at McCove- to have the tent down at the, at McCook's. And there was one that was there for about 10 years or so. And, and it had to be replaced. And one that got replaced wasn't as good, and it only lasted one season.
It didn't even last...
Didn't even last. A few weeks, I guess.
Yeah. It was not good.
One storm. So now they're, they're looking into what was the revenue, you know, that they received from having the tent and renting it out. And they're looking over the past several years to see if it makes sense to try to come up with another tent if it's worthwhile to try to pursue that. So they're looking at that issue. So that's about it.
Okay. Roseanne?
I attended the Commission of Natural Resources, Zoning Commission, and Commission on Aging. And there was not any essential new business discussed at any of those meetings.
Okay. Ann, anything from you?
I got a text from somebody just saying that if I say something, guys can repeat it, just so people can, I guess, hear it, if you don't mind. So the only thing I was going to say is, I could get, I heard from the Board of Ed, and they were saying that I guess there had not been a representative from the Board of Select from there for the past few months. And they're just requesting that we...
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to my report. Something about a week and a half ago, somewhat disturbing, there was a banner up over the exit 73 overpass, and then a sign near there. And then another couple of signs off of exit 74, one between the overpass and the four corners, and one just north of 161 that was put out by an organization that has some affiliation or tie into some extreme views. The police, we all take this extremely seriously. Anything that conveys messages like this is, that is offensive and, you know, is not something that any of us would approve of at all. And I posted on my website that, you know, any organization that attempts to ferment hate and towards another group, you know, has to be renounced. So we definitely, you know, are not in favor of what we saw there. And it was very offensive. The police have been investigating it. The chief has reached out to local PDs to see if they've had any similar type incidents. I've been in touch with Rob Brule and asked if anybody else has had any. I haven't heard of any. Doesn't mean there hasn't been. It's just that I haven't heard any. The only ones documented in East Lime were the ones right off the highway. So there's a thought that it may have been someone on and off the highway. I've also been in touch with the school resource officer, Donnie Hull. He's not hearing any talk about anything along this, in the schools. And it's something that they are engaging in conversations with. So it is something that's being addressed. And there's going to be a rally this Sunday between 2:00 and 4:00 down at Liberty Green to state that hate has no home in East Lime this weekend. Also sadly, too, we were hoping tonight that John Pfeiffer from the Neantic Tribe would be here, but he couldn't make it, and he will not be here for our next meeting either. So he will be coming probably once the new board is seated. I think he, very interesting gentleman with the, he's the archaeologist for the Neantic Tribe. Moving on to the ballot, we just talked about that, the referendum, I mean. The question, some people did point out that the ballot, the two questions, I wish we had a little bit more control over that. But bond council dictates how that has to be worded and the manner which. So we couldn't do much there. Last week, we had an incident down in Old Black Point where we had to basically burn off a burning, you know, the propane out of a tank. And it did put an extreme stress on our fire services. And, you know, we've talked about this at the last one, too. We had to bring in fire people from other departments because we were not able to manage with volunteers or anything like that. So here again, you know, it just shows some of the stress. And I don't think it's because people don't care or aren't able to attend if they possibly could. But looking back several decades ago, or not that long ago, you'd get eight to 10, or 10 to 12 calls a week for the fire department. Now you're getting eight to 10 a day, which I think that's one of the reasons why you can't, it's difficult to attract volunteers. So it definitely needs something that needs to be addressed moving forward. Moving on to some good things. Well, actually, with Parks and Rec, the dock down there is something that they think floated down the Thames River. We thought we knew who. We then turned out, we thought it was the city of Norwich. They quickly were going to say, no, it's not us. But the unfortunate thing is, it can be a bit of a hazard. We need to have it removed. So we're going to have to have, we don't have the, the equipment to break it up. It's got cement. It's got a lot of parts. We'll be able to move it, but we can't break it up. So we're going to have to pay a few dollars to do that. It has to be removed because it's a hazard. It washed up on our, at McCook's. Still trying to see if we can identify who will take it. I mean, or if we can identify who will put it there. But so far, no luck.
Extend the kayak. Extend the kayak.
Well, you know, we joked that at night, we could use the police boat and the harbor master boat and take it out to Long Island. But we, that's not something we can do. No, we just want to get it removed so, so it's not a hazard. And it's not there. This passed the other day, last Friday night, the football team from 2003, the state championship football team was recognized at halftime. And it obviously spurred the team mind because they were down 20 to nothing at New London. At halftime, they came back and won with 10 seconds left, 28 to 27. The boys soccer team, which is probably done now, played tonight, is still remaining undefeated and going into tonight's game, had only given up one goal all year. So it's been a great year for them. They're, so, and tomorrow, yes, tomorrow at 3:30 p.m., the Brian Dagel Foundation on Main Street, there'll be a ribbon cutting at 3:30 to dedicate their new renovation expansion they have to the facility there. They need more room to deal with the people that they offer assistance to. So a great resource for the town and the region, the Brian Dagel Foundation. And that's it. Okay. No communications. Any public comment? Seeing none, there'll be no selectman's response. And at this time, I will attend everyone's favorite motion.
Yeah. Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.